Good evening.
Good evening.
Slightly dry weather today. I'm apologies.
Well, apologies to councillor Draper and councillor Shearer.
Thank you.
So much.
Yes, okay. Any declarations of interest? No. Minutes of the Environment Committee can be taken from today and presented at the next Environment Committee meeting. Okay.
Yeah.
So we move on to budgets. Appendix A is our comment here. I'm having a look at those questions and thought Clark can elucidate. Robin.
I presume on right back now, on pages four to twenty nine, that was the, it says it was mother at Lais Hill, but am I right, Lee, that you had terrible trouble getting the pass for that?
There was a delay from the supplier.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. That's company, manufacturer that actually made the visual. My bad, so it was a bit of a time difference.
It gives me more than continued question and I thought that's what the problem was.
It's interesting though. It's the only company you could go to.
We could have, but it was, it would have been even more complicated. It was a custom made panel to fit. The whole panel needed placing in, it had to be a custom custom fit, so we must would go back to the beginning, we made it.
Yeah.
Starting off the shelf sort of.
Just find what I'm a business for, but. Yeah. Margaret.
Yeah, thank you. Also page four of twenty nine, under Lace Hill income. I noticed that the solar income is zero. And I think that's because we can't sell it back to the grid, but.
We have set a contract for that, but we get it paid yearly. And it comes actually, it comes through in May. And the next one, which we have, and we don't know the exact figures, we haven't done it. It's our first year of it as well, so.
But presumably we're gaining through the use of the electricity.
Yeah, so the they're using all the electric they can and then anything else gets sold back to the grid.
Excellent. Thanks for setting it up.
So yeah, I don't think it's coming in significantly under the expenditure line, four one five nine.
It will do, but next year.
We haven't had an idea of what some what the salt electricity should bring in.
Dead news.
But it probably, Robin.
On the empty lodge, we've got we've got some repairs and some expenditure on it, repairs and maintenance fee. They're not huge amounts of money, it's a property we have to maintain, so it seems that some of those are coming out, particularly God, are really likely to have any more repairs and stuff we've got to do on there before the end of the year.
So I wouldn't think nothing major this financial year, we've just done the full redecorated property and it's finished, but it's happening. And there's nothing else, like, you know, we'll see.
No.
To clarify, for that, we were expecting to do that, so we earmarked some money at the end of the last financial year, which is why that line looks horribly over because of the earmark on all of this.
Remember that now.
Yeah.
Because you said that, I think, in particular.
Okay. Don't we happy with that?
Yeah.
Because thank all the staff and the people. So the sites, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we move on to budget four point two, receiving support from the town clerk.
Before we start, I'm going to have to cough to two mistakes. Both fairly similar, I'm kind of, firstly, under solar panels income and expenditure, I must put an income and an expenditure in. That is obviously an error. I can't find the budget line now. Captain Ably.
Four, four one one eight. Two five zero, four one one eight.
It's nine of twenty nine at the bottom. No, halfway.
That's my half of the stage.
Yeah, I've four one one eight. Yeah, I've got a recommended budgeted expenditure and a recommended budgeted income in. That is obviously incorrect. So the typo needs to come out of there. The second thing, I forgot last environment meeting, we said we would budget two thousand pounds in this budget towards the bio audit. And I forgot to add that one to the bottom of it, so there will be an additional budget line with the additional two thousand pounds for your last meeting in there.
Okay.
Otherwise, obviously, the big ones are the national insurance pensions and salaries will be finalized when resources have had a chance to have a look at. And it's the
They are what they are.
About starting for next year. Otherwise, at the moment, we, a few of these on here, it's contractual, that they go up by RPI for September. At the time of writing the budget, that hadn't been been properly published. So I put in a holding figure. I'll get those, three point five. Last I checked, it's looking as though it's going to come in at two point seven, so they'll have to do a slight tweak to amend that. But before it goes to our resources. I'll get that, thanks. Sorry, I've got Lucy's connecting. She's dialing in.
Okay. Robin.
Yeah, four point two six, six, four six two oh. Their expenses. And see, as we go forward though, you'll obviously have to create a new line on that, and the budget because no of the nothing to do with the new cemetery things to be in this this genders, I presume that if the new cemetery, it all comes back to the Environment Committee. At what stage will we start seeing those things? Some of them after the big decision to take it, the Environment Committee project probably might maybe we'd get a call council, because all the big decisions would have been taken, if the matter being some of the stuff they're in, so.
The those that they're running will obviously be in borrowments on, we're expecting that to be the same, because we still bury the same numbers people. They're just being, well, those are the places.
They probably won't like it, but I'm just, just, I know you've got a line in the budget for the new cemetery, should we? Are you going to use the same line for burials for the new cemetery, you are the old cemetery, we've been up to it's a period of time, there'll be there'll be, there's in the ashes burials in the old cemetery and other burials in the other cemetery, should we? Even if we have a zero in it, should we create a budget heading for it?
All the buried expenses are typically not very much, do you have any reason you'd want to?
No.
Does it mean the same, can you leave from one trace to the other?
The fees might be cited, we could think it's cited from the new cemetery, there's been cited different areas.
That will be the areas. We can add budget lines in.
I, I, we, we care, I think we probably cover zero budget line for it. And then because it should start to order drifting towards this committee and then when we assess what the burials will be, because obviously we've not got to that stage yet and we won't, and it would be this committee, I presume, will make a recommendation council on what the rates would be. It won't be a forecast decision, as always in my colleagues, making them group talk out. So.
I just, exactly. Well, set up to bury anybody in the next financial year.
Or will we? We're expecting towards.
Okay, so that doesn't need to go on, then if we're going, we are going to separate them out, it doesn't need to go on to this budget then, doesn't it?
If it's not going to be in, we're going to on the best, we'll we'll create it, we're getting the document to you and say, these are these.
Right.
So what can we do?
Yeah.
So through the chair, what you're saying is that you're, this will go to precept. And you're, and after precept, for the next financial year, you'll create a budget line for those expenses.
No, the income.
The income.
The expenses, if they're all extent, will be on the same line, because they're the same.
Yeah, so that can be a shared budget, it won't be a separate budget. No, I know, it's just that for a while, it'll be useful to be able to know the expenditure, we're spending on new cemetery when it's in, and an old cemetery, for a while, there's going to be too much to spend, so eventually the old cemetery will become almost apart. And so at some point, there'll be a graduation, so we can see the money flow from one to the other.
So while we're developing it, we've got the cemetery's development budget and that will run us through to the end of next financial year. With income, we don't need to budget anything at this time, because we'll still bury the same number of people, it will balance out, it doesn't matter. There may be a tweak we may do that policy differently, but our estimate is that we still get the same level of income, it's the same number of people, we need that.
And it's already a new cemetery, make its budget line there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as long as we're covered, I'm happy, it's just that looking at your people, you can't take Tommy on.
John.
Yeah, well, I just believe it by what we need to say. We, we may or may not try and give a price for burial
Yeah.
in the new cemetery, I think it's worth having a debate about that at some point.
That's going to be discussed.
And the second thing is, so the increase from last year to, well, this year to next year is about twenty seven, twenty seven thousand. I'm guessing quite a lot of that is accounted for by increases in pain as the stores are sold on. Are there any other significant items that have added to that? Because obviously, four point eight eight percent increase is above the current rate of inflation.
What?
I mean, it could just be sprinkled throughout the whole thing, but are there any particular items? It's, I love numbers, it's quite hard sometimes to pull out just where the increases are.
I mean, the big one, as you've identified, the big thing of environment is, is, is wages. And that would be most of our budgets, it's wages. There, I mean, we've added a little bit on because we're expecting some additional play areas that we'll take on over the next financial year, so there's a cluster of bits and pieces there. Can't think of anything hugely specific, but it's one.
It seems to be about seventeen, adding in all the various talking spots. So there's another ten grand that's come from somewhere, just wondering. It's clear where that might be, I don't know.
Well, some of it's going to be wage increases, some of it's going to be.
Yeah, that's all, that's the seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
So just another ten, okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to preempt some of the discussions, but I'd like to have a reset meeting. It would be helpful just to know where that might be, I say it might be sprinkled on, I don't know, certain items, there might be another component which will account for most of that ten.
There are, I mean, there's things like, there's quite substantial increases, something like tree works. The contract fees have gone up, we've taken on additional land. Budgeting is sticking forward.
I think it helps to highlight that, so people, so we get all around the platform to be above base range. We need to know, you know, say it is because of this.
Well, I, I, so, sorry. Once we've got final figures for wages, the five percent is just the holding.
Okay.
So it will, it will change. This is just where we are at the moment.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Robin.
Yeah, I'm, thank John too. Having a bit of a dark discussion, I mean, the reality is we employ people, we're out of years. And we want to be a good employer and second reality is we've got a ever growing portfolio of things to do, so the idea that you would suddenly be able to portion, but those who sit on the Environment Committee can see what the work doing and those who sit on other committees can see what the work doing. If you just sit in the resources committee and don't sit in the other committees, you're really seeing stuff as numbers, not as actuality, and that's one of the dangers of the, when it goes to the resources committees, I think it, my comment on what you're saying, John, I think the note around that, we won't necessarily definitely know by the resorting being what those things are. And because the class being wide to put in what the estimate can be, and it could be, yeah, mine comes in quite a lot lower, but I'm not, I'm absolutely sure we love discussion about whatever. I worry about the discussions around Sarah's, because it's a, it's a necessity to actually do the job we've got to do in town and and if anyone can suggest how you can do it without paying anyone, that would be called a charity, and I don't think we are charities.
Volunteers.
Volunteers, we don't need to go down that route, the people who suggest it, I don't suppose they'll be volunteering for anything, so.
Okay, so, anybody else got any questions, other questions on your budgets? So.
Probably thank the part.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and Lee.
And Lee.
Okay.
On the regulation.
Yeah, one of those, thank you.
So everybody's, yeah.
Okay, right, so, I'd invite councillor David Lee as a motion.
Yes, thank you, I think it arose last meeting and it was agreed that I should come back with another motion in order to make something happen really. And thank you to Nina, who nudged me about that, because even though I'd written my book, it wasn't up here. So I'm very happy to amend this as appropriate. I think it's a hugely important issue impacting on all of us, but particularly children in the areas around schools. And I think the feeling was, we need data in order to be able to take it further and take it back to the schools on, on the, how serious a problem it is outside schools. But in order to do that, we need councillors to volunteer. And we need to agree when we would best do it. Either before or after school or both, but at the moment, after school, it's dark and that may not be the best time. And also whether we should, I feel we should notify the schools we're going to do it, because somebody might notice us with notebooks and whatever the earth's going on. So I think the schools need to be aware when we're going to do it as well.
I would hazard that, of course, there'll be less idling. If I'm dropping the alarm or, or the car can get out of the car. Lisa.
Thank you. So I've got a camera set up in Kim's bedroom window and it records the cars and you can see which are idling, because they've got their lights on. So, and it is still light enough to be able to see, but yeah, they generally got their lights on. So, but yeah, so I've got, I can provide videos for any day, for any year.
Thank you, no, I, I propose we do it end of school times, the reason we, in the morning, it's staggered, you have the breakfast club and the drop drop. In the afternoon, it's when the rush really starts and that's when you have the problems.
Yes. It's on strong.
And yes, this is through watching what's up, what's up, what's happening, Lisa will confirm that as well, it's after school definitely.
John.
I'm, I say the motion. Could need to do that, which on the table, I think we would probably need to have a meeting that starts exactly how we're going to do this.
Yes.
Because I wonder if anybody else is similar. I mean, you can just copy what they did rather than make a stupid decision. But, you know, I don't want to be messing with someone against the, we've talked about how to do.
We should, yes. Difficult answer. Already, it would just be a case of going and counting them and preparing, sort of sitting there, I did not, I thought. Is that your thoughts on it, Margaret?
Well, yes, probably, but we also need to agree which schools, is it all schools, you know?
Process of actually doing.
Yeah.
And then we move on to where and when we've got the how.
Yeah.
Yeah. Robin.
Like I said, and I think that much easier to do this in cooperation and do it in face the appearance that it's a predatory exercise, so whatever we, how we choose to do this, perhaps it'd be better to sort of say we're going to be here as such, as such, let the parents, teachers association, that they might want to be involved in them. And and let them know in advance, ask our sort of, basically, we're going to be doing this, have you got any concerns? The sort of engagement with them, they come back and say, well, they've got some concerns and we know wouldn't be the one to do it, but we can take those concerns into if they think, well, we don't really want you standing here, or we don't want you standing here, or they've got this when children go into school, so it's a partnership. I think you, and then because we can see where the land lies and then hopefully if they've been involved in the discussion about doing it, then when the information comes out from the motion brief, it'll be much easier to, them to take on board what the findings are, if you've involved them in or given them opportunity to find it, so on both accounts, if they don't want to be involved in finding it, they know it's taking place, so they could have been, but they do want to be involved, then the information you give them will be in partnership, won't it? So, so that seems to be a good way of doing it and rather than, than jump to any other alternative completely, because I know from what you were saying about people might wonder why we're there. And I think that's a very wise take.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you. My only concern is when parents tend to see people in high vis is, is they stop doing the behaviour that you don't want them to do. And they suddenly don't park where they're meant to not park for that day only. And then the next day, they're back doing it, so I am a bit hesitant in letting parents know this is going ahead.
So it would speak to school officers.
Yeah.
So the school officers know.
Yeah.
Now, I believe that one of our schools has been back back to them, yeah, well, this already. So the question would be whether we're in with food going there as well. Or, and, I'm struggling on this on three schools. But don't seem to have been.
Yeah.
Or certainly, certainly haven't responded to us when we've, when we've approached them.
Yeah, thank you for that, the, one of the issues, that's Buckingham Primary School responded. And it's the Mothers Can Group were proactive with that and they're very keen on promoting no idling zones. So maybe we should contact them as well and see whether they would want to be involved. Because it's better if it's a wider community thing.
Yeah, they would, they probably.
John.
I think we should do all schools.
Yeah.
And if, if one school has taken action, to an extent, we need evaluation of that action, but although we need a before and after measure to really. I've just sent my information, it's downloaded from my Dela Green Schools campaign, which is a very simple survey form. It's, it's between buses and cars. The buses are idling outside the schools, but I don't know.
Turn it back.
Maybe the primary schools, them buses are there. In my count, there's only a school two, of course, the buses are idling outside.
They're all literally secondary schools, far away.
Yeah, well, maybe secondary schools next time then, we didn't find any of those. But I'm sure all schools, whether we do that undercover or not, I don't know. I mean, it's a tricky one, isn't it? So if we're going about my business, they're going to suddenly feel, turn the edge on.
Lisa, Lisa, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know, I don't know if you can see me or him. I wasn't sure if it's already been said, because the sound is a little bit muffled, but I do think that we should first of all, I'd like to volunteer to, to take part in whatever strategy we decide to do. Secondly, I agree that we should be speaking with the, the schools. Possibly any parent like PTA type things that they've got, but not necessarily announcing it to the wider schools, to the wider parents, like not saying to everyone, yes, on this date, we're going to be coming in testing, because like Lisa said, people tend to curtail their behaviour a little bit when they know they're being monitored. And I think that we should focus this time round on the primary schools, because we know that the Buckingham Secondary School said that they were going to implement a no idling policy for the buses, I know that we didn't get a response back from the Royal Latin School, but Buckingham Secondary School did say that they were going to be speaking to the bus companies about that, I believe. And also agree again with what Margaret was saying about reaching out to Mothers Can. I know they felt a little bit disheartened by the lack of engagement they got from some schools. And I think they would really appreciate knowing that we're on board and maybe doing something collaboratively with them. But, because it is really important and it's not going to get any better unless we highlight how much of a problem it is, because I think that the issue is, you have one parent that idles and they're like, well, well, no, it's just me idling for a few seconds, they don't necessarily recognise that for say a half an hour pickup slot there's constantly throughout that half an hour, and this is purely guessing, because we won't know until we do a survey. Let's say three to five cars idling constantly. Because each car that only idles for say twenty, thirty seconds, and that's being quite generous, I think. It's going to be constantly replaced by another car idling and another car idling and another car idling, but people don't necessarily think and view that wider picture. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Lucy. So I think we're in agreement that, that we should do it. Can we do it? And who does it? And when we do it? Where we do it? Where, where is everywhere, but we need to have some sort of diary, wrote up schedule for it, I think.
I suggest we focus on primary schools, like it's been.
Absolutely.
It goes, so.
Yeah, no, Nina and I went up to secondary school. When Megan told me, the Buckingham Secondary School, well, there was something to Margaret's original letter about this and because, because of the difficult way children at secondary school changed during the fall of store. And it's, it's the buses I'm idling that may be a little shorter. And the head was really quite on board with looking at monitoring particular levels, et cetera, if they're good and trying to, trying to discourage the strategy, yes.
Thank you. First of all, i- if people are idling, are they committing an offence? They are actually, no, no, I, I think that's a, that's a curse, it's my main point. So therefore, it seems to me that regardless of that, they're unlikely to get nicked, are they? So therefore, we've got to be in the world of the art of the persuasion. And would it be worth our while and expense of actually producing an extremely simple, simple on page leaflet, which we could ask schools to distribute? Because I suspect there are going to be those who are totally recalcitrant and won't do what we want regardless. But there would be quite a few people who haven't really pottened on to the fact that it's causing a problem and it is an offence. And more to the point that it, it, it's causing problems, or potentially so. And dare I say, in the school, it's still education.
Yeah.
And I wonder, and if it's got the backing of the town council and, and the school's prepared to dish it out, I wonder if that will then start creating the environment that people work in, say, well, no, we shouldn't be doing this. Rather than digging their heels in and saying, I'm not going to be told what to do. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely, I think we've discussed previously that when going to run involve for children, we're doing some sort of. We're doing some sort of.
Yeah.
Um, campaign post or or a list or something. And and I think that's probably be better.
Yeah, yeah, I.
Better coming from the store. I think in this first instance, it's a gathering of data. Rather than knocking on different windows and saying, turn your engine off. Um, because we'd like to get them to speak in the first order.
Yeah. It just occurred to me that if the schools are up for it as well, or sooner they were, then the fact that. Um, the community and the shape of Buckingham Town Council saying about this, it starts that. Put a certain degree of push behind the whole thing, but I, it's funny a suggestion.
No, 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 absolutely, absolutely. I don't want to say, uh, Tony.
I was just going to suggest that if any. Um, legal world design, that that would be a great way to engage that parents group. That brought the issue to the town council, really. Um, and that would be to draw them in straight away, I think, you know. You put five points down on why idling in bad children or whatever, that's a good way of drawing them in. And possibly picking more things where they. Well, every car, not ones that are idling just, but every car, so people know. Possibly.
Can I just respond to that? I agree with you largely, but if you put. Leaflets on window, you know, we're actually then going to get some on the road and where. Also the you, the trees that have been felled in order to reduce the paper. So we've got to be careful that we're not creating other unintended consequences really of that.
So.
Oh, you could laser now, I think, on the blue screen. Um, apparently it is, it is illegal.
It is.
Um, uh, version eighty eight, uh, but you find upwards of twenty pounds.
Hmm.
A fixed amount of unitis.
Yes.
Um, so maybe you should try.
Lovely. I think. The points made about positive engagement and the head of the secondary school needs to be noted. You also, anyone who goes up there at school time, notice that the head of the secondary school is always out at the front of his school. As his children leave and come to school. So he is monitoring these situations personally, it means that only the safety of his. Vehicle to getting on and off the buses is never present there. So I think that's really a good thing. We've always had, um. Less than a much more difficult challenge with the um, grammar school in the sense that. The coming and goes, the sixth form is various difference to the um, in variance to the buses coming. But it was only some years ago that we discussed and we achieved getting the railings outside the Gremble School. Because of the buses going up the pavement and going through there to get to the grammar school, thinking that it might be just as well we keep the children of. Healthy and fit until they have chance to hit the eleventh class.
Hmm.
Um, so I do think that we cannot. Walk away from that, that if I'm correct, correctly, if I'm wrong, the schools that responded. Positively were the alley eight schools and the ones that didn't bother, or the academy schools. Which either means they have a different policy. Or a different approach. So if we're going to involve all the. Schools.
Or if it's just the person.
It could be coincidental, yeah, but they all, they all are under the same. Um, trust, so I have to imagine it must be coincidental three times. So I think that. We should engage, but by the same token, we should engage the um. Have a new head in the grammar school.
We're we're not looking at the ground school.
Why not?
Do you have any primary schools?
Right now.
Well, I, I, Chandel's Road is. One of the biggest hotspots for people moving about during um, peak traffic times for schools.
So this motion is specifically on no idling outside schools. Um, and I think if we start to, um. Be trying to look at the buses and the um. The um, traffic going down Chandel's Road, the ground school and and for secondary school traffic. I think we're gonna give ourselves um, a bigger piece of work than we have thought the capacity to.
Cut loose, yeah.
Do at the moment. We need to start somewhere, and I think starting with. Monitoring the primary schools. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna um, move to the vote in a second. Um, but before that, um, I'd like, um. A show of hands of who would be um, willing to volunteer to go and and help with this monitoring of the schools. Lisa's got two hands up. So that's everybody and we could obviously open that up to um. Everybody. Um, Margaret, shall we liaise at the time of this meeting to to work out?
When?
Some sort of schedule on it, because I think if we're we're going to try and work all those details out. Um, it's not within this meeting is the right place to do that.
Can I just suggest, I've written the motion myself, to add. In order to take the issue of no idling zones outside schools further, I should have put, it doesn't mention schools in that motion. So. It probably ought to say outside schools.
Well, maybe, maybe so, so I haven't proposed a motion or seconded it yet, so.
Yeah, try and.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah. Are you hap- are you happy with Margaret's um?
Schools.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on the on the amendment?
We should say outside primary schools as well.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah.
Primary schools, yeah.
That's a problem.
Absolutely, primary schools. So all those in favour of the amendments. And then all those that want to stop some, you know, most, all those in favour of the motion.
Head.
Thank you very much. We've got a, I think, that was voting on us, yeah.
Nice that you've created your own vote as well, Margaret.
Okay, you've got section one of six application to Chandel's Park with a report from the state, wouldn't you?
Yes, just to get the committee's agreement that we could proceed with the next one of six application. Uh, to use up the balance and strength in two pounds that was remaining. Um, for Chandel's Park. Um, we recommend that a new factory install for the concrete base in the bank. Um, so this was just to get an agreement to put the application in. Um, we'll also have to come back to this meeting because we may need a little more budget from. Um, the Chandel's management's budget to put the concrete pad in. Uh, we'll probably do it ourselves and also do it in a report. We'll probably be actually doing this around March time.
Okay. So is the space, is this bench, um, one that is the same, um, wheelchair?
Yes, so it'd be a single style, it's just down in the river, but with an extended table.
Table.
One second there.
Yeah, Lisa.
Thank you. Um, just wondering what the, um, what's could be made out of, because if it's a flood, if it floods there, then wood might not last. And then it's like a silly question, will it flood? Because a lot of parks do, but I think, yeah, what's it made for?
There, it'll be hardwood, that's why we use hardwood, it's expensive, it does last.
All right.
Um. And all the others are made of hardwood as well.
Yeah, no, the others are. Right, thank you.
Lovely.
Thank you for bringing it forward. Um, it would be a shame to run that many back, wouldn't it? And um. And the park is very well used. Um, and I mean somewhere else sit. But they, we see the very positive fact and. We'll discuss the location at the time, I'm sure, but agreeing to get money for you.
What's in Chandel's Park?
Yeah, but.
Shorty in there, almost gonna be.
So can we move to the vote on that? All those in favour? It's unanimous. Thanks very much, Lee.
Yeah, thanks, Lee.
Um, then we move on to a seven, which is. Um, Portland Park Management Plan Improvement Plan update. To receive another thoughtful.
So this is just really top date members, uh, it's also an annual update. Up to on the bottom of the plan. Details, what we've done and what we're still going to do.
Hmm.
It also highlights that next year, uh, comes to the end of the, this management plan. So there'll be a sort of five year review and we'll do a full update of sort of our management plan next year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Lovely.
Just thank, um, probably Lee and Brian for keeping the management plan. The park, obviously, has changed quite a lot in the prior years. Um.
Hmm.
Yeah, there's things gone in there and um, and we've got a constant maintenance of the trees and. That will continue, won't it? So, um. But I think the park's deteriorated in that five years and it's always well watered, so. And it never suffers with shortages of water, has it? So I think, um, it's it's it'd be interesting to see what comes through. Will. Will the chair and obviously, will there be any, do you see, envisage any additional changes to that? Or opportunities to move forward some of the health standards?
I think the immediate one is there's still some, the old style bins we want to get updated. You know, this. And yeah, we'll redo it as we go along.
That pass.
Did I see your hand up, John?
I was just gonna say, propose that we accept the recommendation.
Yeah.
That is a very good report and we look forward to the refresh.
Yeah.
I think it's next thought break, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Is it in the vote, Martin?
No.
Part in the sense though.
You know, you know, the thought. Maybe.
Right.
Yeah, to receive.
To receive. Okay, so then we move on to. Um, I just, eight public seating, which was important for the six, I'm sure, so. Let me be Nina. So who's been? Hi. Well, Lee, Lee. You've been, Nina.
Thank you for the fantastic job doing a survey on social media and the city house response. Um, but actually, quite a lot of it has actually already happened. And some of it was still looking into and getting sorted. So one of them, we just talked about the bench at Chandel's. Um, we're gonna get that sorted out. Um, I think there's also going to be some discussions with the Buckingham Society. Uh, as they're renovating the bed outside here.
But they're looking for, looking for a mission to do certain.
Yeah, so there's stuff ongoing, so so that's very positive. I think there's also a recommendation from yourself, the chair. To carry out a bit more survey. Uh, to the vision in the town.
Yeah, so this, this came from, um, John's motion, to take stock of existing provision. Um, so. Lucy and I said that we we'd um. We'd go around and count the benches, basically. Um, if anybody else wishes to join us, um, let me know, uh, when, a range of times to go and count benches.
Have you got enough fingers between you?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, through the chair, I, can I ask Lee, um, if the Buckingham Society are still in touch about their bench? Um, contribution, because they were talking about the possibility of. A bench at one point, and if if all is quiet on the western front, um. We've got a, an exempt meeting this week and I can bring that up under A O B. If, see if they're still interested, because they were expressing interest in possibly uh, funding a, a bench. Um, I'm I'm going back twelve months, I think.
It was like, well, just add another bench, I'm here.
Yeah, that, that came up. When I was talking with Carolyn about. What, what the Buckingham Society's possible plans were.
Right.
For that, and I said, we do, we are looking for sites for more benches.
That's it.
Do you think that we could, we could get another one somewhere around there? Um, and she said, actually, she certainly consider that when.
But then there wasn't any, anything.
But that was, that was only, um, three weeks ago.
Oh, oh, yes, I'm, I'm going back a twelve months, when they got very excited about the possibility. And then we were talking about that the town council would designate. Locations as part of an overall plan. But I'll bring it up and and see what's what.
Society to get back in touch with this.
That's where I was going to, thank you very much.
Absolutely. John.
Just wondering, um, the planters are outside the old town hall. Could we attach seats to the?
We're not our planters.
Or could we ask the Shire Council?
We're not shy, perhaps, you're certain.
Brilliant.
So brilliant.
On our land as well.
Yeah.
Not my land.
Not our land.
Not our land.
It's the Shire Council.
Yes.
Just one discipline.
You can always sit in the planters if you want to. Yeah, I just was saying that. By the time we've done this, that'll be twenty twenty five. Um, we should be seeing the. Um, cycle wheel on the railway walk and the scenic walk completed, so. It might be that we want to have a sector discussion then. Uh, once it's finished about appropriate places for. Benches and replacing benches along there, because it is gonna be, um, you're gonna have a longer stretch of the scenic walk in use and it's going to be. Um, solarlit and it's going to be a main place to, so it could be that we want to. Um. I'm sure these have a discussions about it period, but some of the places we've got benches along there in our area. It's very slightly put there for various reasons, we may want to keep them where they are, may want to look at the poses. There are long gaps. Past the last bench before you get to the London Road and there's a definite gap. There's no benches when you go back the other way. So, um.
We certainly, we certainly weren't looking.
Looking at then.
Yeah, Margaret.
Yeah, I think I was getting myself muddled up when planters were mentioned. I was thinking. I, because I cycle and not always in Buckingham. You can get planters that are part, part planter and part bike, you you chain your bike to it. And I was thinking, but bench, don't eat woodwork with benches, actually. So sorry about that.
I've seen those outside white shows, it's a different place. Planters.
Sort of regular point, right.
So anyway, so, um. Um, do we make the report?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, if anybody wishes to go and, um, really listen to, um. Take stock of our benches, uh, please let me know. Thank you very much. Okay, so then, um, air call to say to receive unfortunate.
Um, only what it says, we. I was asked to write to the Shire Council with the questions listed in A four two one and the responses in three point one.
Robin.
Well, firstly, looking back on where this came to, um. Council, um, Mr Mark Shavings came to town council. Um, in twenty twenty two. And raised the concerns about the A four two one and the concerns about the. Pollution on the A four two one, which we then went away and asked. Um. In twenty twenty three, um. Went away and asked for a report. We, and some choose to, it's it's gone off, yeah, some choose to go on it, and that that was. Um, by officers of Buckinghamshire Council, so maybe wait until this, and then I believe. In between that, John, it says John proposed that we should go and do that, which is right to do that. So we got that information. And it was really about the, um, the flow of the road along it. I don't know what it tells us, Chair, apart from the fact that. The biggest amount of pollution there is on the A. Um, is by the Emberton Way, um, junction compared to the rest of the London Road. But when you look through the um, schism of their previous, um. Incompties of the pollution, it it still is not comparable. To the pollution in the town centre by a long shot in the sense, because most of it's moving. That doesn't mean that the pollution doesn't go into your property and you can't smell it. So, um. Don't know, um, what, what, what it actually tells us apart from the fact that, um. Where is, where we even go with it, in in the fact, where we should. Through the chair, at least write back to the gentleman who come. To attend the town council meeting in the public session. But, um, I'm ready, where we should make them aware of it. Um. But there were some figures given by the officer, um. Period, so I, I, I don't know where we go with it, really, or.
Well, the, the, on the agenda, it's to let them stop.
Yeah.
John.
I'm just looking at some information here. And I'm scanning it very quickly, so it's meant to be accurate. The World Health Organisation recommends that the concentration of nitrous oxide. Should be no more than ten micrograms per cubic litre. So we're obviously assessing that. So we're obviously in excess of that. Um, the actual figures from a. Government UK side saying NO two pollution has reduced in long term recent years. The annual mean concentration of NO two nitrous oxide at the roadside has decreased over time. Series to twenty one point eight micrograms per cubic meter. So in both of those measures, our. Monitoring here shows something well over one World Health Organisation's recommendation. And secondly, the average drought country in urban areas. Not just in the rural countryside, in urban areas. So I'm not sure where this forty micrograms per cubic meter actually comes from. Uh, that may be the legal requirement, but it is the legal requirement. I think we should be writing to our M P to say, does the current government continue, you know? Invigorate carrying on with that target of forty micrograms? Or are there moves to be evaluating this? Because the point about NO two is it is, well, it is a precursor pollutant in that. If NO two is high, other things are likely to be high as well, particularly also. To kind of indicator of general pollution, in other words. Um, and I think it's worth raising with the M P. I think it's also worth replying to this and saying, they don't send these figures here are in excess of national data. And certainly a world health organisation's recommended um approach. And certainly worrying thing about Edmonton Way, I'm not sure if that's been, i- if that's actually on Edmonton Way itself. I presume it must be.
It's four two one.
The four two one by.
At the junction of Edmonton Way.
Okay, then I think.
There was a map somewhere.
There is a map, if you click.
Which um, yeah, which showed the the.
Okay, Sean.
That's someone, thank you very much.
Well, I'm here to serve.
Sorry, I was just trying, because I just clicked on a little bit and I've lost it, I'm hearing everything. So just going back to it.
What concerns me is Edmonton Way is several metres from the four two one. Whereas the new houses on St Brumboldt are much, much closer to the actual road itself. And I think, one, we should challenge whether these figures are safe. Given the natural because I'll send the link through to the town clerk and to yourself, Chair. Um, and secondly, and I think we ought to be saying. There should be a third site because of our concerns about the new estate. Um, of of St Brumboldt, given its proximity, greater proximity. To the A four two one in that, you know, there'll be children on that road right behind where the um. Uh, the A line is, as we know, it's caused other problems as we call it.
So I I, it's my memory searching greatly. We asked the Shire Council. One or two ago, following on from the gentleman coming to speak to us in public session. We wrote to the Shire Council, asking them for all the data. On all of the the um monitoring points throughout the town. And and we didn't get anything back for the A four two one, so this is the first time we've seen that. Um. Um. I. Would imagine, but there's there's a there's a new report, do you know, if I've read this one that isn't with a report, you know, in January. Where did I say that? Yeah, it does, doesn't it? Yeah, um. So my. My thought on it is once we have sight of the whole of the. The whole of the new report, we have a look at those figures and and um look at what we then. Do, whether that be. Writing to L K, et cetera. I think we need to have a look at it as a whole, rather than just concentrating on the Edmonton Way. Um, and um London Road monitoring sites, um. And, yeah, I'd just like to take take a more holistic approach on that. But in the meantime, like, so we find out where these. We've done done set um fa- finding a much lower figure from. From World Health Organisation to Buckinghamshire's forty micrograms, you know, executed, um. Then we need to find out where they where they come about that figure from, I think, don't we?
Seems to show it's defra.
What, the forty micrograms?
Yeah. I mean, clearly, regardless, you know, you want to, it wants to be an absolute minimum and it links with the idling, doesn't it? This is all about air quality and, um, yeah. I mean, it does look in fairness as though Buckinghamshire Council, when you open those pages, they obviously are. Trying to take some action, but it's a question of what we can do to minimise. Wha- whatever the ideal range, I mean, that isn't ideal, is it? It's, you don't want it to be more than that, but the lower it can be under that, then the better.
Traffic levels um get greater, then it it just moves definitely.
Yeah, just to matter of accuracy, I I asked for the. As a local member, I asked for the attitude we put up there. Um, the officer actually went up there and met the officers. We had a side visit, try and find appropriate presence, it's a long time ago now, twenty twenty two. Now, my, really my correspondence on it. Um, there is quite a variance between July and December, which was the period of time that these tubes were up there, which was July. December, so there is quite a variance of levels. Yeah, and taking on board the point made, November seemed to be a really high um point. So I'm presuming that this seventeen point eight to E and fourteen thirty four point is an average. November, it looked to my feeling that there was very much higher in November for some reason. Uh, what was going on in November, when this was taken, were there roadworks or were there something going on in November? So, I think, um, it wasn't fine, but, um, not all day. Hours would be more, um, so there there is that and then there is the other data which we 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 do have. So I I think. Yeah, I'm saying that this data that I've got here is far fuller than the information was given to down plant. And it and it's site specific and I do know the officer who did this. So I think the, I will probably just forward this correspondence on the town plant. Read proof, it's got some additional information in there, um. But I don't, I I I I question whether it's as low, John, in average as what it says it is on the end figure. I think the point you're making about the world climate and I think where we are. Going from what the, we need to get some more information here because. The particulate levels and we were even considering when this was done twenty twenty two that we were still just talking about. Ozzy Way and and that being built and it was still going through the planning. Um, very much if we work there today, um Lucy and I looking at it, um and it's very much a reality now. And so I'll I'll forward this on to the town clerk to see this correspondence, you can pick the bones out of it. Because there are additional, also provide the data for the town centre.
Well, that's what I'm saying, to look at these two in isolation is is.
I've got the data for that.
But the new data come in January, it's not been published, yeah.
If I'm allowed, what I'm saying is I provided data today. Sounds like when she gets the data in the report, we're gonna look at the combined data together and come to a conclusion at that point. If we are really concerned, I think John's right, we then at that point write to the M P.
That might be a silly point, but I think weather conditions at the time, so if you've got two weeks in November, like. At at the start of this month, but the weather wasn't moving much, that will add to the pollution levels. So that could be why the figures are distorted. And the other thing is, um, well, when we're doing the idling, which we know pauses. Air quality to suffer, is there any simple to use handheld devices that we could get our hands on? So when we present to schools, we can say, thi- this is the amount of people idling and this was the level. Of poor quality on that day. Just simple to use with.
It's worth having a look. I know that when we went to the secondary school in R and I, um. The guy from the board that was there, um, was talking about having a. Um, particulate monitoring station that they could set up at the school and that wouldn't be a handheld thing, it would. It has to be, but they haven't, apparently haven't got any left.
In my previous role as a health and safety guy, I used to go on site with an app on the phone to measure levels decibels. And things like that and it's amazing now we can't get, so there may be some sorts of portable things, it's just worth exploring, I think, so. Yeah, I already checked out that on Amazon just about ten minutes ago. Um, uh, and yeah, there are some handheld devices, I'm not sure that they're, to pick up NO two, they might be get CO. And things like that, but there may well be stuff out there. I mean, my point with regards to what actually should be taken, as we all know, if we're driving, let's see, if we're driving from. Um, even personal to um, to Bolton, say. To, then you go through, as you go through fifty, seventy, uh fifty. Sixty, forty, sixty, forty, thirty, wow, speed limit. In that stretch of road, as it were. Uh, and the piece of road that's next to the new estate, um, of St Brumboldt, um, sorry, not St Brumboldt. You gotta get the plus in somewhere this evening. But the good section where the next to the St Brumboldt estate, that's sixty, for some bonkers reason. You know, it goes forty round and round about near the new cemetery. And then it just goes back to national speed limit, i.e. sixty, and then got dropped down the four to get beside. Um, green road garage, I mean, what was the sense in that? It's just bonkers. You know, why didn't they simply either carry on the fifty? Because actually the fifty stops and then the forty starts. I missed our point, there's a fifty, sixty, forty at one point as well. It's why the garden centre, I mean, seriously, I mean, it's just bonkers, the number of speed limits on that. What, two mile stretch of road? It's crazy and that up and down, up and down, surely that's going to increase. Um, particulates and and nitrous oxide stones as well. So there are things that can be done and certainly the M four by by Swansea has been deliberately slowed. Mainly to actually reduce the pollution.
And the six to five as well.
Yeah, so you know, that's what actually circle the top is are taking, is bringing in a steady slower speed. Then that actually um helps reduce pollution as well. We can we.
Eco driving.
You know.
Okay, um, so thinking along the lines of mobile and removable CCTV cameras. Is there anything like that for um particular monitoring stations? That could be moved around, um. Because we could always apply to the community board for, it's not going to be something that's going to be dealt with overnight. Um, the more cars arriving at schools anyway, it's going to be an ongoing problem. It could be something that we continually monitor.
So that's going back to the. Idling outside schools.
In a way, um, it's another area that would need mon- monitoring. Because I remember there was another couple that came here and they lived on Badgers. And they were saying the same about that they can't sit out in their garden because it was just fumes. So whether there's anything like that that could be done.
Well, I think that was when. The the monitoring tube got. Um, four two one was after after um. Those people came and spoke to us, um. Robin.
Yeah, just information, well, and this last time it was all done was twenty twenty. According to the report I've got in front of me, Wall Street was twenty point eight. Um, and Bridge Street was twenty two point eight. Wall Street Buckingham, which I presume that is the upper area down towards the school, um, that was ten point three. And Canaveral Court Bridge Street was eleven point five. And Oxfam Market Square was nineteen zero. Market Hill was twenty five point four, and High Street Buckingham were twenty two point one. So they have particulates in the town centre and I've sent that information to the town clerk. But to look at in conjunction with the Buckingham report, additional information, it looks like. The area on the bypass is lower than. Quite a lot lower than some of the areas in the town centre where people are walking about. Um, more pedestrians are walking about. This won't change, of course, with the decision to build Ozzy Way. Which John mentioned about when, it will change that there'll be more people walking. That way, crossing that footway, coming to school. Because I can't imagine they're going to go all the way to the end of this date and cross over at the Brown's Roundabout, are they? They're going to take the shortest route as we always thought, so I think it will change, so. I think it's a case that those children are going to be in that. Um, in between the the industrial estate and that and the lorries and stuff going up there and the fact there's a warehouse now going to be up there. With lorries turning to the warehouse, that'll change the particular people coming and going, um. So it will change, so I have the information I sent to the town clerk, we can decide for it tomorrow. And 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 when we get this other report, put them together because I think it's something, we haven't got the answer, we're not the authority to do it. And the officer, they are definitely monitoring stuff, but it was twenty twenty, that last one, and we're in twenty twenty four.
So my suggestion is that note this report and thank the town clerk for um. And putting them together. Once we've got the um new data um published in January, as I say. Would bring bring it back to this committee to have a look at that, whether we do that by um a motion. Um, circulating, we'll we'll decide on that as 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 we get to it, best best way to do it. But I think, I really think that without the full set of data, it's difficult to actually. Come up with um a structured um plan and response and 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 task, really. Um, so is everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
In fact, thanks very much, saving my thoughts. Thank you. Um. The actual reports. Robin.
I don't think you think with all what you're going on, Lee, don't take this any other way. Um, six point two, um, six two three stroke two three, value of trees. Now, this got moved to you because when, when it hasn't really got a very good explanation around it in the thing. What we was we noticed that when we, there were planning applications. Other local foresters put a value on a tree. As a matter of course, that tree's worth so much money. And I've been given this committee to do from the planning committee, but it was about when, you know, like. The decision whether to cut a tree down. We went to planning and come back. Well, anyway, it's about the value of trees, just if a tree is worth a hundred thousand pounds to replace. That very modifies the decisions to cut it down when it's a planning application. To cut it down or whether to do other remedial works because the price becomes good, the tree is never valued. Out of value, it's easier to cut the tree down than it is to do other sorts of work like putting root barriers in and. And stuff for the house, underpinning and stuff like that because the tree is the cheapest option. That's why we have lots of planning applications with letters from insurance companies to remove trees and I think at the time. And this was really special, we were having a lot of trees moved out in Pejul, you remember?
I asked for a rolling thing to be constantly in planning.
And we wanted to roll in and plan and I'm not wrong and 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 maybe it seems to be on two agendas, so I think. It'd be useful, if my memory is correct with that, that we actually have a bit more reason, the value of trees doesn't really tell us.
I think I think this came on to this committee last meeting, maybe the one before. And it's something that that Lee's started to work on.
Yeah, but there is a difference.
It's not, it's it's not forgotten about, it's probably in the opinion that it's been. It's not, it's, it's not forgotten the amount, it's not in the opinion that it's been worked on.
I think, what I'm trying to say is the actual value of trees and they describe what it's actually trying to achieve. We know trees are worth a lot of money. We know they're very valuable. There was two aspects to it. Let's see, it's something different that the bio committee is looking at. I felt that the planning committee were looking at why we were losing so many trees. We lost 71 area of Page Hill overnight.
So I think, I think, I think you brought that and asked for that to go on to here. And when we were talking about the trees, I've got the church.
Correct.
And that's, that was when that, that came on to this committee. I don't believe it got taken, the value of trees specifically.
They do have a value.
Right to that. But yeah, it's, it's on there, Robin.
It's not an easy one. I'm not, anyway, Lee's got this top of the list, but I think it's.
Along with a lot of other things, Lee's worked on.
I'm not, this is not meant to say what it's been done. I don't think it really described what it is.
Anybody else got anything on the? Nancy?
19824, the, the toilet doors. I wondered if through your Chair Lee could say anything about possible start date. It's, it's an ongoing situation. And of course, we've had some flooding now, which I assume has damaged the doors and the toilet from what the town clerk's email was saying today. And consequently, I wondered if he cared to comment.
I don't think the floods will cause that much more damage to the doors, but we're aiming to carry out the work in the New Year, sort of missing out on the Christmas period. And we're going to re, get, re-quote the work. So yeah, it's working progress, well.
Robin?
With the discussions tonight on do, do we feel that 432 stroke 23, because we go ongoing, so it's like the A421 now needs to be amended to say what it is? Because we, we've done that part of it, haven't we? We've got the information in. And now we're waiting for other information to do that. Does that have to be amended or for another action? Because it's the action we're asking and the action this isn't what we're asking for now.
Well, I think, I think realistically, we've, we've got the information on the A421 that's come in, but we've just made the decision, haven't we, to, to wait for the rest of the information before we because it, it does state reviewing all the information it has about the pollution in our town. And in light of the new figures, we haven't yet got all of the new figures. So I think that can just say what it is.
Second one.
Completely, and they've looked on it. I was to leave the chase up, I can respond to it.
Yeah.
The other one being 7th G罗, 30, 32 stroke 24. Ongoing, it says. So we discussed the street strategy, that we consider that's still ongoing now. Or does it have to?
The city's strategy, we just discussed it. It was on the agenda.
Yes. And what, does it need to stay on here or does it?
Well, it stays on there because it's on there because it's still on the agenda.
I'm only just asking, it's not saying telling it should be this, that and the other. It's just that sometimes things change.
Anybody else? Thanks for the actual report. Okay. Thank you very much. Then we need to we, we've got new news places pending. We still haven't got any news in the, um, which is important.
Yeah. So the transportation has completed, I'm just wanting to say.
All right. We've got, we, we are going to, once we've got that information, we are going to put our best, so we.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. I don't have any chairs announcements.
With the flooding, no? None?
I didn't put it in sound. It's, it's horrendous, the flooding. It's, it's not a once every 10 years. It's a once every three weeks event, to the way it's going on.
Actually, once in that 100 years, we got that changed. Yeah.
It's a thought.
It's we had the wettest October on record, I believe, in the country. So really, it didn't come in and storm birds. Which I just can't help thinking about some, some lumps. It, yeah, like there was nowhere for the water to go. And I spent quite a bit of time this afternoon going and visiting a few people. I said, Robin, Lucy, I don't know if anyone else has been and seen any flooding, checking up and people. And I found, and the team have have contacted a lot of people. There's, there's some damage, there's damage to businesses, yeah. I don't know what else to say, really. John?
I think it's a small point that I thought one. The monitoring of the level of flooding at one point stopped because the flooding went above the measuring post that's there. So if you look at the actual historical, I think at one point, this is flat line. Was that the point? The actual measuring post was under the water. And clearly you can't measure something that's under the water. So there was a bit added to it as a result of 2020. I think he's right, the environment, he's saying, he's adding another bit. Because clearly it's narrow, it's a little bit, but it's, it, that's not, that one's now going above even that extent. That's something we could do.
Discussion's already been had, John.
Okay.
And in regards to fracking as well.
Great. Thank you, Phil.
Okay. So, um, case this meets all, we've been to, um, competition. Everybody's in agreement?
Yeah. It's one of them.